I'd like to call the April 28th meeting of the Board of Selectment to order. At this time, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, if we could rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business is public comment, and the first person we have signed up is Steve Simonian.
So, I kinda jumped the line, I apologize, but there's a bunch of second graders at Brenmore that probably need to get to bed on a school night. Back on Friday, April 4th, I had the opportunity to participate in the reading program that the Auburn schools do every year, and I got to read to Ms. Torini and Ms. McIntyre's second grade class, and it was a fantastic group of kids, and I just wanted to acknowledge 22 of the most phenomenal letters of thank you I have ever received. So, again, I apologize for cutting the line, but they're prob- it's probably their bedtime, so thanks to all the kids who took the time to send me a letter, that was fantastic, and I can't tell you how much this means to me. Thank you.
Next person we have is Michael Robidoux.
Good evening, Board. Through the chair, if I may. My name is Mike Robidoux, I live at 81 Bancroft Street. I just want the Board of Selectmen to know that if at any time anyone has been offended by my approach or demeanor, sometimes my emotions get the best of me. But it comes from the most sincere passion I have for my family, my business, and the town. I have a lot of respect for the Board of Selectmen, and will work to communicate more effectively. Thank you, Mike Robidoux.
Next, we have Adam Burney.
Good evening. Two quick notes, as I said at your last meeting, we have an open space forum Wednesday, April 30th, so that's two days from tonight, in the same room, same time. We're gonna go over the draft open space plan. It is available on the town's website in multiple places. It went out on the town news feed, I apologize for the mix-up, you might've gotten it two or three times, but we'll be here, we'll give a quick presentation on the plan. We wanna hear comments, questions, all that kinda good stuff, so please come down, if you wanna watch it from home, hopefully we'll televise, but we'd really love your input, so if you could take a little bit of time and come down, that's great. And, second item, Darlene Coyle's not able to be here right now, she's in her Board of Health meeting, but Saturday, May 3rd, from 9:00 to 12:00 is the Household Hazardous Waste Day, so any Auburn resident who has some nasty bits they've been holding on to, load 'em in the car, bring 'em on down to the Horgan Rink on Oxford Street. It's free of charge for household hazardous waste. The Masons are running a charitable electronics take-back for a small charge, they'll take your old TVs, your old radios, computer monitors, all that good stuff. If anybody is feeling charitable and wants to help out and volunteer, give us a call anytime between now and Friday, (508) 832-7703. Darlene would love to have as many people who wanna come out, come out. Anybody who's got muscles who wants to lift heavy stuff, come on down, we'll get your workout. But again, it's Household Hazardous Waste Day, 9:00 to 12:00 on Saturday, May 3rd, at Horgan Rink. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Mr. Bob Plutukas. Where'd he go? Bob Plutukas? Oh, there you are, sorry, missed you.
Good evening. Through the chair, Bob Plutukas, 231 Milbury Street, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. As I get older and begin to reflect on the past years, I look at the present Board of Selectmen and the past Boards of Selectmen, and all the time and effort that they put in, the sacrifices they make, and their families make, and I think that at some points, I'd be more than happy to write a check for a hundred dollars to start a wall of honor for all members of the Board of Selectmen. I can see a lotta blank walls here, just with paint on them, but any member from the past, right from the beginning, historically, in history begins to mean more to me as I get older. And I'd like to see their names listed in the years that they served. Something for you to consider, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the suggestion. If you can pass that to Sean. So, the next items are street layout hearings, so before we begin, if I could invite Mr. Burney and Mr. Coyle up here, so you can participate in these street layout hearings. We have a street layout hearing for Westview Street at 7:00 PM, we are past that time, so is there a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the hearing is open. Who wants to speak first on these?
I'll jump in.
Thank you.
This was a street layout hearing for Westview Street, and this was actually a citizen's petition by, I believe, Mr. Fran Horgan. We did do some research on this through the Engineering Department, and we did find that there was a subdivision plan dated back on August 7th, 1967, so it goes back about forty-seven years ago. The roadway was constructed in accordance with the plan, and for whatever reason, the roadway had never gone through the final steps of being accepted. So it's something that the Engineering Department and DPW would support.
Okay. So, in your packet, we have the street acceptance report, we have a report from the Planning Board, the Town Planner, we have the legal notice, and we also have the petition from the residents. Mr. Burney, did you have anything to add to that?
I would just say that the Planning Board, due to the fact that it was citizen's petition, they waited and requested a report from the DPW Director on the road. At their last meeting, they didn't have a quorum, so they were unable to supply a formal report, per Mass General Law. Without the report, you need a time period of 45 days to pass. I don't believe that time period has passed. I would recommend that the Board maybe continue the hearing. I think that the Planning Board will support the layout of this road. I don't- it's impossible for it to happen prior to this coming town meeting, but I think that it could be resubmitted for an October town meeting, but again, I leave that up to the Board.
I know we require you to have Planning Board recommendation.
You- you're required to have a report, and if no report is submitted, you need a time period of 45 days from the, I believe it's from the referral, but I would have to double-check the MGL.
Mr. Grossman?
In discussing with one of the Planning Board members, the reason that was given to me that it wasn't passed was the fact that there wasn't a quorum that evening, and that's the only reason that it hadn't passed.
That is correct, but technically by MGL, in order to lay it out, the report is required unless there's a 45-day period between the Board's meeting and the layout hearing. So it's not a matter of the Planning Board not being willing to lay the road out, there was unfortunately illness and absence at the Planning Board, so they were unable to provide the report. And because of the time period, I don't believe that the Board can perform the layout. I think, all things being equal, they would report that they're in support of it based on history, but based on timeframes, I don't know that the Board can close the layout hearing and lay it out this evening.
You say you don't believe, do you know for a fact that it has to be that way, or could the Board-
That's my interpretation of the way that the MGL is written.
Okay. I just wanna check on the forty-
Or the Planning Board meeting, but-
No, because the layout hearing needs to be-
If you need to consult, we can take a brief recess.
No, the planning- the layout hearing needs to be a minimum of seven days prior to town meeting, so without that-
Right, 'cause town meeting is next Tuesday, yeah, so just unfortunately, the timeframe isn't gonna allow- Mr. Simonian?
What is- what is the timeframe for that 45 days? What-
My understanding is it's from the Planning Board referral, from when the Board refers to the Planning Board, which was done-
At our last-
-at the end of March, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
So it was less than 30 days, or in the 30-day timeframe.
Forty-five days between when we refer it and town meeting?
No, and when the report is returned, and the referral was March 31st.
Through the chair, one thing I think I feel to point out is the total length of this roadway acceptance would be 267 feet. A portion of that roadway had been previously accepted years ago, approximately 370 feet, so it'd bring a total length of 637.
Okay. So, I know we're on this hearing right now, but will it be the same case on all of our hearings tonight?
No.
Okay, just this one?
Correct.
Is there any additional Board comment? Are there rebuttals for the- I'm sorry, Mr. Simonian, go ahead.
One other thing, you said since this is citizen's petition, it has to be resubmitted before, in that timeframe, before fall town meeting, but is it by citizen's petition again, or because it's already been referred by us to the Planning Board, it doesn't have- it can just- we can-
The layout hearing can continue.
Okay.
Because if you- this layout hearing is open, if you, as the Board, choose to continue the layout hearing to a date certain, you can move ahead with the layout hearing. As far as the warrant article, that would be a different, you know, that's more of a question for the clerk. I believe that because this is a 10-signature petition for annual town meeting, it would need to be resubmitted as the 100 signature for special if it went back in fall.
If the- if the Board continued the hearing and showed support of the street layout at a future date, and the DPW Director has already shown his support, could the town submit, then submit the warrant article?
We could, yes.
And I would assume if you're showing support at this point, you would have no issues with-
I wouldn't object to that.
Because it would be, you know, a bigger hurdle to get 100 signatures at a fall town meeting, and it's really through no fault of the petitioners-
Correct.
-that the Planning Board was unable to take action on this. So, I think at least if we could reassure the petitioners that the town would submit this article at the fall town meeting.
I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there one more? On here, and you spoke to it, where it says that it was approved by the Planning Board on October 9th, 1967, what was approved, the plan for the development, or the actual acceptance of?
The plan for the development, for the subdivision.
So the acceptance of the street isn't part of that, that-
No, that's the approval of the subdivision plan, and then obviously you have to construct the roadway-
Okay.
...and go through the normal process like we're doing now. This should've been done probably 35, 40 years ago. I'm not sure exactly when it was built, after 1967?
So it just never made its way to the Planning Board prior to this?
And that's similar to all the streets that we have before us tonight.
That's fine.
Is there anyone here for the Westview Street layout hearing? If you can come up to the microphone, and if you were able, I'll just bring it up to speed, if you- be sure you're able to follow us. We would need to, with the support of the full Board, continue this hearing for tonight.
Yep.
It's impossible for this to go forward to town meeting next Tuesday, the timeframe doesn't allow it with Mass General Law, so it would be my recommendation to the Board that we continue this and ask the town to submit this for the fall town meeting. Otherwise, a citizen's petition for a fall town meeting would require 100 signatures, not just a 10.
Which we don't have to do then, right?
Then you wouldn't have to submit it as a citizen, we would ask the town to sponsor the article, 'cause they've already indicated that they do support the street acceptance.
There's nothing more that we have to do then.
Mr. Coyle, just confirm that you'll sponsor an article for Westview Street on the fall town meeting?
Correct.
Yes?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, good.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, could you give your name and address for the record, please?
Dan Morgan, 13 Westview Street.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on this hearing? So, we can continue it-
Motion to close the hearing?
No, continue. Motion to continue the hearing.
Motion to continue the street layout hearing.
What do we wanna say, Sharon, to the second meeting in-
We need a specific date.
No, we need a specific date. The second meeting in May?
My next Planning Board meeting would be the 13th of May, so I would recommend that you probably want to do it after that, so we can-
Okay.
-submit the report at that meeting.
So it would be the Tuesday after the Monday holiday, so that would be the first, or the 31st?
Twenty-seventh, I believe.
Twenty-seventh? June 27th, Mr. Simonian?
June 27th.
I mean, May 27th.
So we're gonna continue the hearing to May 27th?
Okay.
Continue this hearing to 27th?
Right.
Correct.
And then it will be submitted at the Planning Board meeting on-
In theory-
On the 13th?
The 13th, the Planning Board will make their vote.
Okay, then, motion to continue the Westview Street layout hearing to May 27th.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The next hearing we have is a 7:05 hearing for Karen Avenue. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted, the hearing is open. Mr. Coyle?
Thank you. I was- the DPW Director was asking myself, was the petitioner for Karen Avenue. This is a roadway, during our inventory process of evaluating all town roads, we found the road was in disrepair with the number of the other roads that are here this evening, and when we checked upon this road, we found it was actually still considered a private road. And this road had gone through the subdivision process back on March 8th of 1973, again was signed off by the Planning Board, constructed, and again, not accepted. I would recommend the layout be approved. It is a plan that was prepared by Cullen Engineering, dated back on March 8th, 1973, and recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and the total length of roadway is 400 feet, and it would extend from Burnett Street to Lorna Drive.
Thank you. And Mr. Burney, regarding the Planning Board's hearing and vote?
The Planning Board felt that it was approved under subdivision control. For that reason, the fact that it hadn't gone through its normal course of action to be accepted, they felt it was appropriate to move forward with laying it out and moving into town meeting.
And they took an affirmative vote on that on April 8th?
They did.
Okay. So in your packet, you have the legal notice, the rebuttal notification, and the notice from the Planning Board. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, are there any public comment regarding the Karen Avenue street layout? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there a motion regarding the-
Motion to approve the layout of the remaining portion of West Street, Westview Street, from Station 0+1.
No, that was you.
Wrong one.
Karen.
Karen Avenue's entirety as shown on the plan prepared by Cullen Engineering, entitled Patch Acres Subdivision, dated March 8th, 1973, and recorded in Worcester Registry of Deeds Plan, Plan Book 397, Plan 77. Total length of Karen Ave would be approximately 400 feet.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The third hearing we have is a street layout hearing for Serra Drive at 7:10. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to open the hearing.
Is there-
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Mr. Coyle?
Serra Drive was part of the same subdivision, Patch Acres, and again, recorded with Plan Book 397, Plan 77, at the Worcester County Registry of Deeds, and it was approved by the Planning Board on March 8th, 1973, and the total length of Serra Drive to be accepted is 530 feet, extending from one end of Lorna Drive to the other end of Lorna Drive.
Thank you. And Mr. Burney, regarding the Planning Board action?
Again, it was an affirmative vote based on the similar circumstances to Karen Ave, previous history with the Planning Board, and lack of finalization by the original developer.
Great, thank you. And so just for the record, we have our rebuttals letter, the legal notice, excuse me, and the report from the Planning Board. Is there any Board comment or questions? Is there any rebuttal or public comment for Sarah Ave? Seeing none, all-
Looking to close the hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there a motion regarding the application?
Motion to approve the layout of Sarah Drive in its entirety, as shown on plan prepared by Cullen Engineering, entitled Patch Acres Subdivision, dated March 8th, 1973, recorded in Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book 397, Plan 77. The total length of Sarah Drive would be approximately 530 feet.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The next item we have is a street layout hearing for Lorna Drive at 7:15. Is there a motion?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Mr. Coyle?
And again, this is also part of the same subdivision, Patch Acres, Plan 397, Plan 77, recorded to Worcester Registry of Deeds, and approved on March 8th, 1973. This particular roadway had a portion of it previously approved for approximately 1,700 feet, from Rochelle Street to roughly Karen Avenue. This would be a 1,200-foot extension, and then would complete a total distance of 2,937 feet of Lorna Drive.
Great, thank you. Mr. Burney, regarding the Planning Board's recommendation?
Again, they voted affirmatively based on past history and failure for the original developer to complete the layout process.
Great, thank you. And for the record, we have our rebuttals letter in the packet, the legal notice, and the Planning Board's street layout hearing report. Are there any Board comments or questions? Seeing none, are there any rebuttals here for the Lorna Drive street layout hearing? If you could come up first here, give your name and address for the record?
Elise Beverly, 12 Lorna Drive.
Okay.
I guess what- I guess the end result is that we're just trying to find out, now that this is- now, it looks like it's gonna be approved, what does that mean to us?
It means that this goes to town meeting-
Okay.
-next Tuesday, and if town meeting approves, it will be accepted as a public way-
All right.
...and have the privileges of being treated as public way.
All right, and how about the condition of the road? Does this have anything to do with that, the fact that it's in really poor shape? Is that- who does- who does that go to?
I'll let our DPW Director address that.
Well, what I can tell you is, I believe all of the roadways in this neighborhood are in poor condition, and what this will allow is that during our process of reviewing all of the town roads, if it would- if accepted at town meeting, it would allow us to use public funds to reconstruct all these roads.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, did you have anything else? Did that answer your question? Okay. And there was another rebuttal who wanted to- if you could come up, the woman in the ba- okay, go ahead. No, you can go first. Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Nicholson, 22 Lorna Drive. And my problem was the same thing with the road, 'cause I haven't had a meeting last year about the road, and I really didn't get too far. I had a meeting with yourself, with my wife, and, you know, I'm just very concerned, because the road is a mess really.
Okay. So I think- go ahead, Mr. Coyle.
Through the chair, I can tell you that I have had discussions with residents on Lorna Drive, some on the section that's public road, and some that where it's private. If the town is going to move forward and reconstruct a portion of a roadway, I would- assuming these go through town meeting, I think it's preferred to look at the subdivision as an entirety versus doing a very small portion and leaving remaining roads untouched. So I think that's part of the overall plan, is to first get these approved through town meeting, to make them eligible for public funds, and then compare them to other roadways within the town for reconstruction.
Okay, great. Did that answer your question?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Ma'am in the back? Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Donna Holloway, and it's 23 Lorna Drive.
Okay.
Does that mean you'll be posting signs for speed limits on the road as well?
Mr. Coyle?
Through the chair, I would have to think about that, whether or not it's a prima facial law, or if we would post it. If you give me your name and number, I can contact you and talk to you about that directly.
Can I tell you why I'm asking?
Can.
Because of the dance studio at the end of the street, where parents ride up and down the street like it's I-290?
Well, speed limits, through the chair, actually, if I were to post it with a regulatory black and white sign, I believe that would require approval through Mass DOT, so there's actually a lengthy process, but there may be other options for different signage. So again, if you wanna either contact my office tomorrow, or you can talk to me this evening, the number at the DPW is (508) 832-7814.
Okay.
And we can discuss it, see if there's any other options for signage.
And have you brought your concerns to the Police Department?
No, I've actually gone down to the dance studio several times, with absolutely no-
Because the Police Department would be the enforcement agency?
Okay.
So, you know, there may be something that they can do, you know, to- for some enforcement in that area.
Okay, be more than happy to do that as well.
Great, and we'll follow up with the Chief as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments on the street layout hearing? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted, and is there a motion regarding the layout hearing?
Motion to approve the layout for the remaining portion of Lorna Drive, from Station 17+00 to the end, Station 29+36.85, as shown on the plan prepared by Cullen Engineering, entitled Patch Acres Subdivision, dated March 8th, 1973, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book 397, Plan 77. Total length of Lorna Drive would be approximately 2,937 feet.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Holstrom, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The last street layout hearing we have tonight is for Old Cart Road at 7:20. We're past that time, is there a motion?
Motion to open the hearing, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Mr. Coyle?
Through the chair, I'll defer to Mr. Burney to begin this one.
Mr. Burney.
Old Cart, oh, excuse me, Old Cart Road has a long history with the Planning Board. It began construction in the mid-'80s, and was done piecemeal. So there's a portion of road that's probably about 400, 500 feet long that was discharged by the Planning Board, never went through the street acceptance process, and then there's the remainder of the road, which, if you're familiar with it, is essentially a circle or a needle eye, and the developer is getting on in years, and the Planning Board has talked to him, and he came in and said, "I don't wanna fix the road, I'm just gonna give you my bond." So what the Planning Board did is they exercised their option under Chapter 41 to seize the developer's remaining surety, and in doing that, the town becomes the responsible agency for the road. So in order to move forward, it's logical that the town would approve the road as a public road, because we have a sum of money to be put towards the completion of that road, and I think that there will probably ultimately be some public funds that are required, so in order to do the work that's required on the road, public acceptance is probably the most clean way to go about it.
Okay. Mr. Coyle, did you wanna add anything to that?
Just that I agree with Mr. Burney, we had some- we had some discussion on this in looking at what funds were available, I think the options were to utilize those funds and basically put a Band-Aid on Old Cart Road. I think it's probably in the town's best interest to take, utilize those funds towards a somewhat larger project and actually fix the roadway correctly, but you can't do that without it being accepted as a town road. So I think our plan was that if it's accepted by the town, we would utilize the funds from the developer and the- developer and additional additionally town funds to actually fix the roadway correct versus just putting a leveling course and something that's not going to last.
Okay. So just for the record, if anyone else, the bond that the town took is not adequate to complete the road. So there couldn't be an expectation that 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 money was enough to go out there and take care of the road. So it will be some, you know, a time period for the town to allocate funds in addition to what we have to complete the road.
That's correct.
So it's not that we took the money, we can go out and fix the road tomorrow.
That's correct.
I just wanted to be clear on that. So for the record, we have the abudders letter, we have the legal notice, and we have the planning board's street layout hearing report. Is there are there any questions or comments from board members? No, okay. Are there any abutters here for the street layout hearing? First, this gentleman here, if you could come up and give your name and address for the record, please?
Hamilton, 25 Old Cart Road. So basically, you agree that the road just can't be patched. How are we going to go about determining what needs to be done to that road? Are you going to send an engineer out there? And, I mean, it's more than just take the binder down and clean it up and repave it. I mean, there's drainage problems, there's electrical problems, there's every utility that runs through that road is a problem with. There's no there's no sidewalks on part of it, the curbs are falling apart. As utilities have come in to make repairs, they haven't done the repairs correct. So you go around that road, and it's more than just sending someone out there to say, you know, pull up the asphalt and redo it. So you're going to somebody going to be hired to evaluate it?
Well, I'll let I'll let Mr. Coyle handle that. And just for the record, Mr. Coyle services our DPW director and also services the town engineer. So I will let him answer that question.
Through the chair, during the design process, like all other roads, we would evaluate whether or not it's total reconstruction. Likely, the majority of it would be pulverized the existing roadway. The existing sidewalk would also need to be reconstructed. We would evaluate any other drainage improvements that are needed as part of the design. Typically, we don't find that utilities need to be upgraded. They're normally the responsibility of the utility company, but that's something we could look at, whether or not there's something that needs to be fixed out there and discuss that with the utility company. But there would be a process involved during the design that we perform prior to going out to bid.
And I'm sure if you call Mr. Coyle's office, he'd be happy to discuss the specifics that you can bring to his attention.
I would just suggest that you that you advise the power company that you're going to do this work and let them plan it because they're out there probably every two or three months ripping the road up.
Okay, we typically deal with the utility companies.
Okay. Is there anyone else on this hearing? The gentleman here? And just give your name and address for the record, please.
Jim McCullough, I live at 15 Old Cart Road. Utilities have to be replaced. The last storm, I lost a stove, an oven, a cooktop, a television, DVD players. I was told by Mass Electric National Grid, they're going to take the transfer box that's underground and put it in my house and raise it. There's definitely some water problems. But I spoke to Bill. My issue was just to get this passed tonight, move forward. The only major question I have too is are the sidewalks going to be repaired too at the same time? We talk about the road, but are the sidewalks all going to be standard and replaced, or those are some that will be removed?
Through the chair, typically, any existing sidewalks that are deteriorated, we would reconstruct as part of the project. And I will communicate with National Grid to discuss what needs to be done out there, whether that's something that they would do prior to reconstruction.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Simoneon?
I didn't catch the name of the gentleman that spoke first, but I guess based on his comments, I have a couple of questions because if the utility work that's been done there, I know every time we have approved anything, include, you know, moving a pole, whatever it is, there's always been the stipulation that the road would be returned to the condition that it was prior to that event taking place. And so I guess based on those comments, I'm curious if they have been out there and have done substantial work, have, you know, has someone made sure that it was in fact returned to? Because according to the folks that live up there, and I have no reason to doubt them, there's there's some problems going on. So I, you know, I guess that would, if National Grid is doing work up there and doing repairs or whatever it is, are they taking care to put these things back in the in the condition that they were before they started? And are we following through on that with them?
Sure. Through the chair, because it's a private road, there's no oversight required by the town.
So we need to get it accepted so we can have the oversight?
I'll answer your question. National Grid makes an improvement to the road, alright? The road's a mess. Take a ride. When National Grid ripped up, they did a great job. When they come back, they patch it. I got all the respect in the world for the grid, okay? They didn't make a mess of the road.
I'm just asking the question because I have been up there. I've been up there and I've seen it. So I don't doubt at all what's being said. I just but I understand because we haven't accepted it.
It doesn't fall under those guidelines, yes. Is there someone else?
Just to clarify that, they may patch the road, but if you go to the sidewalks, that's where they falls apart. They don't quite finish patching the sidewalks, they fix the road, check the sidewalks out.
But as it was just said, it's not been accepted as a public way. So we have we can't require National Grid to report to the town when they do that because they're working on a private road. So once this road, if accepted on Tuesday at town meeting next Tuesday, then it would it would fall under those regulations.
I just have one more, one other question.
Mr. Simoneon?
So it seems like from discussion here, because if the road is accepted by town meeting, since the bond, we're going to take the bond money and have money already in hand to repair part of this road and additional public funds. I'm just asking the question because I'm sure it will be asked. Will this will that put this ahead of other road projects that have already been approved? And will it will it take funds from those projects because this has bond money and it's going to be completed first? How do we typically do that? Because I don't know what I know you and I have discussed your process a little bit, but I don't think we've ever discussed this specific scenario, so.
Sure. I think that is a fair question through the chair. A roadway that's in equally poor condition and has been accepted for years, to me, should be done before this road should be. I think that in fairness to the people who've been waiting a long time as well, I don't I don't think just because it's once it gets approved Tuesday night that this jumps ahead of other roadways. But it is in very poor condition. So I can say that there's, you know, hopefully, we're making a lot of headway on the road that are in poor condition, and it will move up the ladder hopefully fairly fairly soon. But I wouldn't put it ahead of other roads that are just as bad.
That's fine. And I have no I have no qualms about the roads that have been done in the last few years because we've had conversations, and I think most of the people now are happy with the progress that's been made, and we know there's more work to do. So just asking the question because I know it will be asked, and I appreciate that.
Understandable.
We've been, you know, we have moved forward a long way from where we were just four years ago.
Is there anyone else who wanted to be heard on this hearing? Mr. Page, name and address for the record, please.
Wayne Page, I live at 90 O'Carman Road in Auburn. I'm just wondering, and believe me, I want all the roads to pass because we need to take care of our roads because they're our taxpayers, and it's not their doings when these buildings are being made or streets by private contractors. But as Mr. Coyle in his speech had said, that the contractor just said he's not going to do the road. Now, he's you're taking away his bond, but it's not paying the full amount. Is this going to happen to every resident or neighborhood that has a private road? The contractor's going to say, "I don't want nothing to do with it," and then the people and the taxpayer have to deal with it all the time?
Well, I think Mr. Bernie can address that because I know that this is a bond that was taken years ago, as today I think we we require more.
Through the chair, I think what the issue is, is this bond was placed in 1986. In 1986, the amount in the bond most likely would have covered the cost of the work at the time. Through probably a variety of circumstances, the road wasn't completed at the time, and it just kept extending and extending. And over, you know, 30 years, the inflation and that kind of stuff just really blows the price out of the water. Currently, the planning board subdivision regs require the road and utilities to be installed within a 24-month period from approval. So the bond is based on the Mass Highway bid weighted bid prices with a 25% contingency. That's placed, and after 24 months, the board has the ability to seize that and complete the road, or the developer has the option to request an extension. So this is a circumstance that we have worked to avoid in the rewriting of the subdivision rules and regulations.
And, you know, what Mr. Coyle said earlier, said going through all of these old subdivisions now and checking to make sure that these roads, if they haven't been accepted, we're moving towards accepting these roads because there were there may have been bonds years ago that were left-
So-
-but won't cover the costs of the road.
Okay, what you're actually saying to me, if the bond was 600,000 and it's gone over a million now, that's just numbers I'm throwing out, is that because of that, the town has to pay the difference. What the bond is, you cannot recoup anything else from the contractor?
For the for the for the regulations back then, as he just stated, they've changed their regulations now so that that money doesn't just sit there and waiting and waiting for street acceptance. It has to be done within that 24-month period. We, you know, we're just we're trying to correct what happened years ago, but we can't go back to a developer and say, "We're going to change your bond from 600,000 to a million," which would be the planning board anyway. But we can't you can't go back once it's been approved and increase the bond.
Yeah, I understand that. The problem was my thing with me is that it was brought up that the guy who did the construction over there said he's not going to do it. I mean, I don't understand that. And then the town has to pay the money. And I don't have a problem with the town paying the money. I don't don't get me wrong either. My problem is the contractor saying to these people that he's not going to pay take care of the road. And then you get the bond that isn't enough to pay for the road, and then as taxpayers, they have to pay for the road that they could use from other projects, or these people would have had a better road by now instead of going through all this. That's my point.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Mr. Bernie?
Through the chair, whether the contractor came to the board and said, "I'm not going to do it," or just failed to do it, we would be in the same situation one way or the other. A lot of times what happens is there's bad blood between the contractor and either homeowners or their contractors, because it's usually a developer who posts the bond. So there's a variety of circumstances, and that's why we're working to close the time period within which construction can happen. I also think moving to a standardized bid, I'm sorry, not bid, a standardized surety number, working off the weighted bid prices, it allows for consistent adjustment. If I'm not mistaken, Mass Highway does their weighted bid prices annually. So we're not going to be in a situation where someone's working with a contractor who, you know, for whatever reason, is offering discount prices and giving us a discount bond that in two years is no good. I mean, these prices are going to be for prevailing wage labor for what the DOT is paying for their materials and will be survivable over a 24-month period in a reasonable manner.
Thank you. And if you know the answer to this, do we do we know how many more streets are out there that need to be brought before this board and the planning board for street acceptance?
I don't have an exact number. There are quite a few.
Quite a few that you're working on to get.
There what we're trying to do is look at the ones that are getting to a point where they need to be reconstructed so that we can come in with a few of them at a time versus coming in with 20 roads at once, and there could be that many. So there's quite a few of them out there. So we're trying to do this a little at a time over years, get them accepted and then reconstructed. So it's also Chapter 90 money that we're not getting. We would get approximately $6, $5 to $6 per foot. And if ultimately we end up reconstructing these roads, I think moving forward, accepting them, it also increases the Chapter 90 money that we'll be getting. Certainly not enough to reconstruct to pay for the construction.
But the maintenance.
Ultimately, we're going to end up with the street, then it makes sense to move forward.
Mr. Simoneon?
Just one more, and just goes to this, the change that you were talking about. I'm curious, because you said that according to Mass DOT, it pretty much for 24 months beyond that time period, it covers it, any cost adjustment basically. But you also said that the contractor can apply for an extension. So I get my question would be, if they apply for an extension, is that taken into account the possibility that it will go past that 24 months? And is there an adjustment based on that?
The planning board, through the chair, the planning board does have the ability to request a reevaluation of the bond at that time.
Alright, fair enough. Thanks.
Sorry. Did you have something else?
Yes, that was my concern is while we're moving forward, we're going to make sure we're standing here helping out the taxpayers, plus the people that live on these streets. Because if they've been going through these years and years when a contractor didn't live up to the specifications, then this town needs to step up for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for this street layout hearing? If you could come up to the microphone and give your name and address for the record, please?
Karen Tiden from 41 Lorna Drive. Just to give you a little history on Lorna Drive, we've lived there 30 years, 30-plus years. About 20 years ago, we had a hole in front of our house. So we came to the town hall and said, "What do we do about the hole? We could lose a child in the hole. It was really that deep." And they looked in the records and they said, "It's a private street." From the dance studio on up, it had never been turned over. And I said, "Well, what do we do? How do we get it fixed? Is that my responsibility?" And they said, "Well, the town has not taken over the street because they've given the builder back his bond money, and the town has not approved. It doesn't meet the needs to become a public street." So I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen in our town anymore. There has to be a timeframe, and there has to be a surety placed by these builders that will guarantee that the job is completed. And I also want to know if this is going to cause any kind of refiguration of our street. Are they going to cut into our because we had heard that this might alter our properties.
Okay, I'm going to have to let you have a conversation with Mr. Coyle on that specific question. You know, he can because we're on the Lorna Drive. I'm sorry, we're on the Old Cart.
Okay.
And you're and you're asking question on the Lorna Drive. No, I mean, no, you can have that information. I just-
The whole surety thing. I don't understand.
Right, the surety where-
He got his money back, so there's nothing left over-
Right.
-for Lorna Drive.
And I think you just heard from the planning department that they have corrected that, that there is a process in place. I mean, we are, you know, trying to correct the sins of the past, but we can't do it all at once. And there is there is a system in place now so that this doesn't happen again. And as Mr. Coyle said, he's he's trying to compile a list of all the outstanding private streets. And just so that and you absolutely, I'll have Mr. Coyle contact you on the, I'm getting confused.
Through the chair.
The Lorna Drive reconfiguration, just so we don't confuse it with the Old Cart hearing.
Is that after the 27th, though, for all of us that are here, for any of the streets?
Through the chairs, the simple answer is we typically replace in kind. So whatever width is there, we would typically replace that. We wouldn't widen the roadway. So certainly, whatever the alignment is currently, we would replace that alignment.
Okay. If if the people on Lorna Drive can just hold off for a minute till we close the Old Cart, and then I'll allow Mr. Coyle to just address a couple more questions for the Lorna Drive street. So is there anyone else here for Old Cart? If you could come up to the microphone, please, and give your name and address for the record?
Stan Casillo on number 20, Old Cart Road. I was just wondering, I think there are three or four liability issues that need to be addressed between now and the time that the road does get paved. And I was wondering if, you know, those issues would be looked at or and addressed and fixed between now, say, the road is paved next next year. There were, you know, off the top of my head, three or four things I can think of that should be addressed and looked at as liability issues in terms of being being a danger.
Well, I'm sure that Mr. Coyle would be happy to have a discussion with you, but if you want to list those concerns now, this is a public hearing. You're welcome to do that.
I'll list the ones I can think of. Down by number 25, there's actually a sinkhole that's been repaired right in the street. It's actually trashed, and it's been it's been paved over, but the paving's coming out. So that's one issue. Across from number 18, actually in front of number 19, the road is in rubble, just literally falling apart. And the sidewalk is too. literally falling apart, and the sidewalk is too. My opinion is there's an underground stream there that actually is pushing the street right up in front of number, number 19. At the far end of Old Cart Road, there are, a catch basin that's actually well below grade. It's probably six to eight inches below grade. And I think it's a dangerous situation. In the early part of Old Cart Road, I don't know the number, there's actually, on the sidewalk, a pipe, actually a water pipe, might be a shut-off pipe, about four or five inches above grade on the sidewalk. Okay, very dangerous for kids on Halloween. Those are, those are four things right off the top of my head. I'm sure there are more. Just wondering if, if some of those could be addressed between now and the time the road is paved.
So, so just, I just don't, I'll give Mr. Coyle an opportunity for a second, and I, I'm assuming, you know, with all the comments that have been made, that we'll send this to town meeting, and town meeting, based on the recommendations of the town, will accept the street. So we, first, we have to have it accepted at town meeting next Tuesday. But Mr. Coyle, can you explain, just clearly, the specific concerns and your process to address those?
Sure, through the chair, if it, routine maintenance or sinkholes and pawholes and catch basins that have collapsed, once it's accepted, we would then have the ability to send our crew there to work on it. I can tell you, we do have a very lengthy list of catch basin repairs that need to be done, so it wouldn't be something that would happen immediately. But certainly then it gives us the ability to actually do the work, where currently we can't.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else here on this hearing? Mr. Butler, if you could give your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry about this. Joseph Butler, I don't live in any of these neighborhoods. I guess my questions to the board and to Mr. Coyle is, why isn't the developer liable? Even though he's still around, why isn't he liable for the above, what it's actually going to cost to repair the road? That's my simple question that didn't get answered from Mr. Page.
Okay, so, so we'll, Mr. Bernie, who deals with the planning board regulations and the planning department, will answer that.
It's a curiosity thing, I'm not trying to.
The developer, because the road was approved when it was approved, put the surety up that at the time was equivalent to the construction to remain, or was determined to be by the board. So the way that the laws are written, the board can't of its own volition adjust the surety. The developer would have to make some material change that then they could look at requiring him to do that work. I mean, ultimately, what could happen is the developer could say, "Fine, if you want to make me do it, I'm just going to hold on to it and not do the work," and at some point pass away, and the town is stuck going after his estate for the surety. So this was a way to, as cleanly as possible, end the long-term relationship and take the surety over. Unfortunately, Massachusetts has some archaic land development laws that oftentimes are more favorable to the development side of things. And that's something that over the past 15 or 20 years, there's been multiple attempts to change and alter in various states that have had various levels of success.
And just for the record, the developer isn't required to petition the town to accept those streets as a public street?
No, he is not.
So the developer can just hold on to the street for as long as they wish and keep it a private street? And, like you said, you know, either pass away, have no money left, and then the town owns it anyway. So there's no, there was no requirement back in the 80s for the, for the developer to petition the town. Today, the developers do want to petition the town to accept the street because it costs them for plowing and everything else, but streets that were basically abandoned years ago, the town has been taking the responsibility.
That was an excellent answer to clarify if I may.
Okay, thanks. So was there anything else on this Old Cart Street hearing? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Close the hearing.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? And is there a motion?
Motion to approve the layout of Old Cart in its entirety as shown on plan prepared by James B. Hollack, registered lands surveyor entitled Old Cart Road Estates Property in Auburn, Mass., dated April 1967, recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds, Plan Book 324, Plan 84. Total length of Old Cart Road be approximately 2,754 feet.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? So those are the, that's the close of the street layout hearings we had tonight. As I said, I know that there are some people here from Lorna Drive who had an addition, you had an additional comment on the configuration? Is that what you had asked me, ma'am? If, you have to go up to the microphone so we can hear you.
We had made a couple phone calls, wondering what this meeting was all about, and one of us was told that it might infringe upon some of our property, and we have sprinkler systems, and we were just curious if any of the layout was going to be changed on Lorna Drive. I think we're very grateful that it's being turned over to the town, because we were told many years ago that if it wasn't, they wouldn't have to plow it. And our builder didn't, he received back all of his money, so there was no surety left there. So that was just a concern.
Okay.
And if that was being changed or altered, we just wanted to know who was doing that and what was our responsibility as far as sprinkler heads and anything like that.
Okay, and I'm going to let Mr. Coyle answer that question now. I just wanted you to understand, I just didn't want to get the two street.
I know, I understand.
Layout hearings confused. So, so we're back on Lorna Drive, and Mr. Coyle's going to answer that question for you. You're welcome.
Through the chair, there's no proposed change in the, in the street layout. When they refer to the street layout, that's basically the property lines, the right-of-way of the roadway. The roadway itself, we're not planning on changing. I can say, if people have sprinkler heads, because I have seen it on town property, and I've seen it right on the back of a berm, occasionally that can be an issue when we're plowing. And in that instance, we've asked people to move the sprinkler heads back, but that's kind of a relatively minor issue for us, I think. The question about the layout, we're not proposing any changes. Roadway widening, we wouldn't propose to widen the roadway. In fact, the only times we've changed the layout is there has been a couple instances where we've actually decreased the width of the roadway, where it's been substantially wide, maybe 30 feet, where it really only needs to be 26 feet. And environmentally, that's a movement towards narrowing roadways to a certain extent to decrease the amount of runoff and be more environmentally friendly. So we certainly wouldn't widen the roadway or change the layout. But I'd be happy to answer any questions even after the meeting, because I think the next agenda I have item is towards the end. So if anybody has any questions after the meeting, I can meet with them in the planning board.
Right. So, yes, sir, if you can just come up to the microphone, please?
I just had to get one more thing off my chest here, because I've been on this street for 35 years, and not once have I ever seen any pavement on that street, except for little patches there and there. I know, you know, when the builder built it, I can't even imagine, he never turned it over to the town. I mean, it's, I mean, I've been in here 35 years, and they haven't done a thing on that road. My point I wanted to make as far as the road goes as well is, all the sewers along the road are, the drains are all sunk into the road. There's huge cracks across the road that when cars go by, my house shakes. That's how bad it is. And I've had a few neighbors that live aside of me, the same thing happens there. I mean, I don't know what's causing that, but it's a little frightening.
Mr. Coyle.
Through the chair, the entire roadway needs to be reconstructed, and that's partly why we're here this evening.
Right, so, so if anyone has any, any comments or questions for Mr. Coyle, first of all, he can be reached at 832-7814, and maybe, you know, if a few of you call at the, you know, call him, he can maybe arrange to go down there and meet with you, you know, on a nice afternoon, and, and you can address your, no rain, a nice afternoon. And you can, you can point these things out to him, because, like you said, you, you are the people who have been there for 35, 20, 25, however many years, and, and I'm sure he'd appreciate your input. Mr. Grossman?
The question that, I can't remember your name, that you asked concerning sprinklers and so on, the difference between a public street and a private street, on a public street, there's so many feet in off the street, is actually, a lot of people don't realize it, is town land. When it's a private street, does it, does it go just up to the property? So if any of these people do have sprinkler systems that are right up to the road, there could be some problems. And they would have to address it before you do the paving.
Typically, through the, through the chair, I mean, majority of the time that doesn't happen, but there have been times where we reconstruct the roadway, and there'll be a sprinklehead right at the very back of the berm, and the town right-of-way extends another 10 feet in. So that has happened, but it's, it's not that common. But it's something they would have to move if it did happen.
Specifically, the streets that we're talking about here, it should be checked out before we actually start ripping things apart, so the people have a chance to make their adjustments.
And Mr. Bernie, if you can just give the telephone number if you had to comment in case anyone has any additional questions on the surety and the street acceptance process. Thank you, I can never remember that one. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what's the other agenda item you had?
Short question.
I'll try to get it moved up. I still have a couple more hearings, but I'll try to get it moved up. The next item is communications, and then we'll move on to Board of Selectment items. Just let the room clear for a minute.
Motion for a brief recess, just till this clears. 30 seconds, 60 seconds out of the game.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
We'll go 60 seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, just to clear the room. And then we have correspondence, and then your agenda items are up. Your, we have, it'll go quickly, and Sheldon is right after that one, so we've, we'll, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. The next agenda item is communications. I'm going to read a letter that we received. Dear Ms. Goodrich and members of the board, the council on aging would appreciate it if you would read the following announcement at your next meeting. The Auburn Council on Aging will sponsor a candidates forum on Thursday, May 8, 2014, at 9:30 a.m. at the Senior Center at Fore Garden Drive. All candidates on the May ballot or their representatives are invited to participate in this program. Time will be allotted after the formal portion of the program for individuals to ask questions of the candidates one-on-one. Please call 508-832-7799 by 3 p.m. on Friday, May 2, 2014, if you wish to be included on the agenda. A light breakfast will be served. Very truly yours, Cheryl A. Westerman, acting director. The next item we have is a seasonal open air license on town property, Boy Scout Troop 101 can drive at the fire station. Enclosed is the application and comments. Is the applicant here? If you could come up to the microphone, give your name for the record.
Joseph Butler, Troop 101, Auburn.
Okay. And we have the application, we have the nonprofit status documents, we have the liability waiver, and we have comments from the chief. Joe, Mr. Butler, if you could just tell us what you're here and what you're doing?
We're going to do a small fundraiser, can and bottle drive at the fire department to raise money for the kids to go to summer camp.
Okay, and that will be?
It's May 3, from 9 to 12:30 roughly.
Okay, and held at the fire station?
Right on, yeah, right on the left side of the fire station in the parking lot there.
Okay. Mr. Simoneon?
Just one, only because I think this email was sent to the town, and I don't know if, from Chief Coleman, he, in his email, he just said, "I would request I set up the can drive in the municipal lot adjacent to the station across the street from Savers Bank. This will give them room for traffic coming in and out of the lot, will be out of the way of moving emergency vehicles."
Correct.
Are you aware of that?
Yes, right in the middle of the parking lots, right on.
Fair enough.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other board comments or questions? Any public comments or question? Is there, there's also a note at the bottom, a request to waive the fee, but we'll take that up after this. Is there a motion regarding?
Motion to approve the license provided all applicable requirements of the state and town, any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Is there a motion regarding the request to waive the fee?
Motion to waive the fee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted?
Thank you very much.
Have a successful event. Next, we have a, we have a seasonal open air license on town property, Boy Scout Troop 53, flower sale at the fire station. We have David Keys, who has made the request. In your packet, you have the application. We have comments from the fire chief. We have a letter requesting the fee waiver. We have documentation showing that they are a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt organization. We have the liability waiver. Is the applicant here? If you could come up to the microphone, give your name for the record, and tell us why you're here.
Hi, my name is David Keys. I'm the scout master for 253 in Auburn, and we're going to be doing a flower sale, or hope to, with your approval, at the fire station on the side, similar to what they're going to be doing with the can drive, Mother's Day weekend. We actually reserve it the whole weekend, and we camp out in the back just to stay there with the flowers.
Okay, and, and the sale hours, are when?
Normally, we go about 8 to 5 on the flowers, and then after that, it's, you know, we just.
Scouting stuff.
Yeah.
Is, are there any questions or comments? Mr. Grossman?
The time that you just gave versus the time that's on the application, it says 5:09, 2014, 5 p.m. to 5:11, 2014, 12 noon.
Right, we usually sell out by noontime. We're hoping that we'll be doing the same again this year, so that would be noontime on Sunday.
So you're going to start on 5 p.m. on the 9th selling?
We're going to arrive at 5 p.m. We're going to set up, and then Saturday at 8 a.m. we'll start selling.
Okay, you won't open until just the 10th?
Yes, yes, yeah. Yeah, Friday night's just to set up, and we stay there and watch the flowers.
Yeah, so they, they needed to put that on their application, because they'll be there the entire time, but as I just asked him, he said it'll be 9, 9 to, 9 to 5.
Right.
But hopefully sell out before then.
Right.
So, is there any public comments or question? Is there, Mr. Simoneon?
Same thing, you're aware, Chief Coleman recommended the same location for your.
Yes, yes, I talked with him, and yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
Like to make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? And is there a motion regarding?
Motion to waive the fee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Have a successful event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item we have is a one-day entertainment license for Sheldon Harley-Davidson at 9:14 Southbridge Street on May 3. We have the application and comments from the DCG. Is the applicant here? If you could come up to the microphone, give us your name for the record, and tell us a little bit about what you'll be doing on that day.
My name's Dale McMahon. We're just having a small open house event, that we'd like to have a DJ able to play some music outside.
And the, the, the application says 9 a.m. to 6 p.m. in, will the DJ be playing from 9 a.m. to 6 p.m.?
Uh, no. It would be 10 to noon. Those are just the hours of our operation.
So the DJ would be 10 to noon?
I mean, 10 to 3, I'm sorry.
10 to 3? 10:00 to 3:00?
Right.
10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Are there any comments or questions on this?
Just one.
Mr. Simonian?
Have you received a copy of this from the DCG with the, uh...
Recommended conditions?
These are the recommended conditions from the DCG on, okay. I know we had asked in the past that...
And were you the applicant?
Yes.
Did you go to DCG?
Yes.
Okay. So Sharon, can you just give him a copy of this so he can read the conditions that the DCG has recommended? The three bullets? And I'll read them for the record. The applicant shall obtain any and all required Board of Health permits associated with the serving of food at the event. The applicant shall obtain a building permit for any temporary structures associated with the scheduled events, including but not limited to tents, and a sign permit will be required for any temporary signage promoting the event, including but not limited to banners. You're familiar with those conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Sorry about that, they did try to get it to me, but they didn't have my email address, but he let me know right when I got here today.
Okay, great, thank you for clarifying that. Is there any public comment or question? Did you have anything else? Is there a motion?
Like to make a motion to deny, to, I'm sorry, approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions recommended from the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Thank you, have a good event.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the ZVBA Appointment Process Clarification. I just wanted to, um, clarify, um, our appointment process, as you, as a couple of members or may all be aware, that the zoning Board of Appeals Chairman made an appointment to a full member to expire in June. This board had, um, had made a motion not to appoint any full members, any, any alternate members to that full position because the, you know, it was only a couple more meetings and, um, they would be before us, before the end of June. So just for clarification, the Board of Selectmen appoints members, full and alternate, and designates as such. If the board chooses not to make an appointment from an alternate to a full position, which we chose not to, under mass general law, the chairman may, he's not required to, but the chairman, he or she, may fill that position for, um, the unexpired term. So vacancies under mass general law shall be filled for unexpired terms in the same manner as the case of original appointment zoning ordinance or bylaws may provide for the appointments in a like manner of associate members of the Board of Appeals. And if the provision for associate members has been made, the chairman of the board may designate any such associate member to sit on the board in case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of a member thereof, or in the event of a vacancy on the board until such vacancy is filled in the manner provided in this section. So, Mr. Holstrom?
What was the reasoning for him to, um, for the chairman to appoint that to a full member? An alternate can also vote in the absence of a full member. Was there any reasoning given why, uh, that promotion was given?
Not that I'm aware of, I, and I only watched the meeting in replay and just, so I can only say that the appointment, there was no reason given, just that they made the appointment through the end of the term, which is June. So, ju- just so I'm clear, on, on our appointment process, which I believe this board isn't going to take any action, but had we had it on the agenda tonight to make an appointment, had this board made a motion to appoint an alternate member or someone else, another applicant to that full position, then the person who was appointed by the chairman for the full position would have gone back to the alternate position. Because the, the Board of Selectmen has the authority for the, for the positions. Mr. Holstrom?
So, um, I know that the zoning Board of Appeals position has been posted, and if we, um, if that zoning board position comes to us for approval, uh, will the person that was, I guess I'm hearing, will that person go back to an alternate position or maintain that full status position?
That person would go back to an alternate position to the position which this board designated.
Okay. So that position is only filled, full position for the term, until we get the, uh, the new position filled?
Until the board takes action.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments on that? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because I had been asked about those appointments. Okay. Under zip, under gift acceptance in accordance with mass general law, Chapter 44, Section 53a, we have a gift to the fire department gift account, um, by Canal Sportsman's Club and, in the amount of $50.
You accept the receipt.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. We also have, um, Peter, Peter and Sheila Buckley in the amount of $25 to the fire department gift account. Is there a motion?
You accept the receipt.
Second.
And we have town manager items, um, oh, we will be meeting, prior to town meeting, at 6:30 to take action on the, um, articles that we didn't take a position on. So, the Board of Selectmen will have a posted meeting on Tuesday at 6:30 at the high school. The next items, we have a town manager items. The first is to request to declare surplus equipment, DPW.
Through the chair, if I could have Bill Coyle come up and speak to this. This is a standard, um, vote on the Board of Selectmen to declare certain items surplus.
Good evening, thank you. Uh, the DPW has five vehicles that we would like to declare surplus vehicles. Uh, we have a Dodge van, 1990, it's 24 years old. I think this actually began its life, uh, for, for a while in the fire department. So it's certainly, I think, been utilized for quite a few years, being 24 years old. I think we feel as though it's probably, uh, most beneficial at this point to scrap the vehicle versus trying to, um, salvage it. The other vehicles are 1997 Ford F-250, 17 years old. Again, it would cost more to repair it than it's worth. A 1994 Ford Explorer, it's 20 years old, um, similar situation. Did try to utilize this vehicle the past couple of years and we were finding it was costing us more to, to repair the vehicle than it was worth. A 1999 Ford F-350, 15 years old. This vehicle was used substantially throughout its life by DPW and I can say for 15 years, uh, it's, it's served us very well and was used, um, almost on a daily basis. And a 1988 GMC six-wheel Sander and Salt truck, it's 26 years old, and we were utilizing that truck up into this past winter, but the frame is rotted and would not pass a DOT inspection, so we'd look to scrap that vehicle as well.
Are there any comments or questions?
I just have one. I, I think I asked this before, probably a couple of years ago, I, I just don't remember. These, these vehicles, when we declare them surplus, we just, we just try to unload them? Or?
Typically, we'll, we'll scrap them. There's probably more value in scrap than there is for resale value.
Is that scrap them as far as someone ta- takes them off our hands at scrap, or, or we try to salvage parts off?
Yeah, I've, I've talked to our mechanic, if there's, if there's items that we can salvage, we will.
Okay.
Uh, because some of the trucks, like the, the six-wheel dump, there, there may be alternators and different things that we can pull off, but, uh, you know, I, I defer that to our, our fleet mechanic, if he feels as though it's worthwhile pulling the pot out. And if it's something that we maybe would replace in the past year or two and it has a, more of a value to it, we might pull that out. But if it's, you know, an alternator that's six, eight, eight years old, we, we wouldn't bother, it, it wouldn't be worth replacing, putting that in another vehicle because it's probably not gonna last long.
Yeah, thanks. I, I, like I said, I think we probably discussed that once before, but I don't remember, so I just wanted to refresh my memory. Thanks.
Are there any other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we declare the surplus equipment as submitted by the DPW.
Second.
Any, Mr. Simonian?
Well, I know it's kind of a stickler, but it's not surplus until we declare it surplus. So, you're calling it surplus in your motion, and the wording of the motion calls it surplus before we declare it surplus.
When I make a motion, we, um, declare the equipment identified by the DPW director is unusable.
It's, okay. I, I mean, declare it is surplus, yeah, that's fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Thank you, Mr. Coyle.
Thank you.
The next item we have is a report on a citizen complaint at the meeting of the, of April 14th, 2014, regarding unreturned phone calls. Ms. Jacobson?
Uh, thank you. Uh, through the chair, at the Board of Selections meeting of April 14th, two, uh, 2014, Mr. Mike Robidoux of 81 Bancroft Street spoke under public comment at the end of the meeting and asked me why I hadn't returned any of his calls. Uh, Mr. Robidoux stated that he had called my office several times and asked me to call him. He also said that he had left messages with Sharon in my office for me to call him, to which he said he had no response or no callbacks. Mr. Robidoux then claimed that he had called me over 12 times in the last three weeks, a statement he made again on April 14th, and that I had never called him back and he wanted to know why, and he wanted the board to know why I had not called him back. As I stated that evening, I did not call him back because it was my understanding that I had never received any calls from him, and that is what I, I stated at the time. I said I would have called back had I received the calls and that I would check into it. Occasionally, we may, there may be a call that would be lost, but I found it hard to believe that we would actually lose 12 calls. Uh, so I did say that I would come back, uh, to the board after I double-checked to see if any calls had come in from Mr. Robidoux for me during the period of time that he specified. As a result, I went back and I looked at our call logs in which all calls that come into the office, um, with messages from me are documented by date and name. That's a system that I put in place the first week that I started here, uh, so in January, the end of January of 2011. I looked through that entire, uh, log toward the, toward the last few weeks as well as the last few months, and there are no calls logged for me from Mr. Robidoux. Uh, as I stated at the last meeting, I had not received any calls in recent weeks or months, and I'm reiterating that. I had not received any calls from him, there were no calls logged. I asked each of the clerical staff who take all the calls in the office whether they recalled receiving any calls for me from Mr. Robidoux, and each of them individually stated that they did not receive any calls from Mr. Robidoux for me. As I stated at that meeting on April 14th, uh, Mr. Robidoux did call my office recently and had left a message, I believe, two messages for Sharon, to call him as he had a question for her. Sharon did receive those messages and actually did contact him a, a couple of times and get back to him. However, there are no calls placed to anyone in my office from Mr. Robidoux in which he asked to speak to me or asked me to call him back. So I wanted to make sure that the board had that.
And also at that, that meeting that evening, because the town manager does report to this board, I had said that I would also follow up on this, and I did speak with all three clerical staff persons in the office individually, and they all reported the same, and two of them, which, you know, I really felt badly that they felt the need to say this, said to me, "I'll swear under oath that I didn't receive any calls and I just don't think that we need to be at this point at this time." So thank you for that report. Did any members have any comments or questions?
Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity. Again, uh, I, I just want to make it clear, if anyone does have any questions for me or calls, they can always call the office, I'll get back to them within a reasonable amount of time, or we will make sure that somebody in the town administration does get back to them. Um, the, I'm sorry.
Are you finished with that one?
Yes.
And the next is a report on the fiscal year 11 through fiscal year 13 property tax data.
That's right. Um, over the last week or so, I've been asked by numerous residents whether the town taxes have increased 30% or more, and if they have increased, that, why? So rather than respond only to those who inquired, because there have been quite a few questions, I wanted to provide the facts to the Board of Selectmen tonight, as well as to the residents and businesses and taxpayers of the community, and I thought it'd be easier if I just present this, hopefully fail it quickly, you know, I can talk pretty fast.
Yeah, very fast.
All right. So, uh, first, um, let me state that in response to the question that I have been asked several times over whether the residential taxes have increased 30% or more since FY11, the answer is no. Uh, residential taxes have not increased a total of 30% during the past three fiscal years. Auburn's, Auburn's average single-family tax bill has increased 10.87% total between FY11 and FY14. So I want to walk you through this. Uh, there's some interesting information that has come out recently from the Department of Revenue, as well as the, uh, the Division of Labor Services, which is within the Department of Revenue. Let me one minute here. Sorry, if I, if I could just say, there we go. Uh, just to let you know, the, the data that I'm presenting tonight, again, comes from the Mass Department of Revenue's Division of Labor Services, uh, local services. There is comprehensive data that's available from FY11 through FY13, and that is readily available on the website. Uh, that data has numerous, has every town that is reports in the Commonwealth. There's also a recent report that was put out, I believe on March 20th, by DLS, on FY14 property tax data. And that data only includes 327 communities, and the reason for that is that there are, first of all, there are 13 communities in Massachusetts that have a residential exemption, which, they are therefore not included in the DLS data comparisons, because when you have a residential exemption, you have some different types of data that really isn't consistent with other communities that don't have that. So we're always, when we look at DoR facts, you're always looking at 338 communities, not 351, because you subtract out the, the 13. For the 14 property tax, tax data that was posted, uh, a couple of weeks ago, that only includes 327 communities, because there were still 11 communities in the state that had not set their tax rate yet. So this report is going to use a little of the FY14 pair, uh, figures, but primarily the, the comparisons can really only be consistent across 11 and 13, other than a few things. So again, the average single-family tax bills. Uh, what is the total increase in Auburn's average single-family tax bill since 2011? And this seems to be a very, um, the question's been asked of me several times in the last couple of weeks, and I know it's been asked of our CFO as well. Average, Auburn's average single-family tax bill has increased a total of 10.87% between FY11 and FY14. Uh, there was a map online, a, a nice map that shows, and the red arrow that I've added in there, so you can see where Auburn is, and it's hard to see the colors, but basically you can see that Auburn is in the light green shaded area, which is, um, it, average tax bill is between 3,501 and 5,000. And that's for FY14, and I'm gonna give you some more data. Where you see the white communities, those communities have not yet set their tax rates. Those communities that are in, on this, it's, it's hard to see it, uh, actually, there was a packet that you could, in your packet, you might be able to see the color a little better, it's a light peach, uh, light color on the bottom. Those are the communities that have a residential exemption, those are the 13 communities. The FY11 to FY14 data shows that over each of the last 10 years, the average single-family tax bill has increased in Massachusetts. Statewide, the average single-family tax bill for FY14 was $5,044. This represents an 11.2% increase in that three-year period. The average annual percent increase statewide, again, is 3.7. And I made a note that the 11 communities are not included in the FY14 figures, um, so they can't be compared to the same set of stats when we're looking at 11. Auburn, by comparison, Auburn's FY14 average single-family tax bill was $3,794. This is a 10.87% increase, which I've mentioned a couple of times, which is less than the statewide average. The average annual percent change, based on that 10.87 over three years, is 3.62% a year, which again, is still slightly below the statewide average annual percent change over the three-year period. Interestingly enough, if you look at 29 communities in the area, not including the city of Worcester, uh, just towns, the average annual percent change was 3.63, which is nearly identical to Auburn at 3.62. Again, uh, another map that I thought was interesting, that does show the percent change and where Auburn is in that category. Now, if you look at, uh, one year at a time, fiscal year 11 to 12, the average single-family tax bill went from 3422 to 3547, which is an increase of 3.65 in fiscal year, uh, 11 through 12. In 12 to 13, the bill went from 3547 in 12 to 3653 in 13. in 13. This is a 2.99% increase from 2012 to 2013. And in fiscal year 13 to 14, of which there was more statewide data on the 14, because they also had CIP rates, Auburn's 2013 average single-family tax bill was 3653. In 14, it was 3794. Now statewide, the average tax bill increased 4% in that one-year period from 13 to 14. Auburn's average single-family tax bill increased 3.86% from 13 to 14, again, which is less than the statewide average. For the fiscal years 2011 to 2013, the total two-year increase in Auburn's average single-family tax bill from 2011 to 13 was 6.75. And again, I just want to point out, I'm using this data because this is the data that did not include the 14, but I'm showing you both. The two-year increase in the average single-family tax bill statewide at that same period was 6.53. Important to note, Auburn's CIP during this time has changed. We've actually, through the vote of the Board of Selectmen, been compressing the tax rate to encourage economic development, business development, and thus growth of the tax base in the commercial industrial sector. So what's fascinating is Auburn's been able to, through the Board of Selectmen, vote to shift the tax differential on the CIP and yet still maintain a very consistent average single-family tax bill. Auburn's CIP changed, again, it went down minus 7.4% compared to an average change statewide of those 89 communities that have CIP of .24%. As far as ranking, and this is where I think it was interesting to look at how we stand and how consistent we've been. The ranking of average single-family tax bills has been consistent since 2011. I did not go back prior to that because this is the data that's available online at the Department of Revenue, so I wasn't going back further than that. The, based upon the 338 communities for which the data was available in 2011, again, there's the communities that do not have the residential exemption. The rank statewide for Auburn was 120, and that is on a basis of low to high. So we were in pretty much, as you can see, 35%, about the bottom third of the state in the average annual tax bill. In 12, we were 122, in 13, we were 125, and in 14, back to 122. And again, keep in mind, this entire time, while that's been very consistent, the board has been slowly reducing that differential and encouraging economic development through an improved CIP rate. It's also important to keep in mind that despite this multi-year compression of the tax rate, the average single-family tax bill in from 11 to 14 has been 3.62%. Further, as you know, the town does not tax to the Prop 2 and 1/2 limits that are allowed under state law. In FY11, we used .92% of Prop 2 and 1/2. We used .78% in FY12. We used zero of it in FY13, and 1.14 in the current fiscal year 14. And this is just a chart that we had shown, I believe, at our Fall Town Meeting that shows the usage of the excess levy, and it also shows the growth of the excess levy. This is important to show because our tax rate, again, has remained fairly stable. We're in rank-wise, taxes in the state have gone up every year for 10 years, but we still remain in the bottom third of the residential, average residential tax bill. If, I wanted to show you areas of communities that have a CIP rate. Most of the communities in this area that that are in central Mass actually have a single tax rate. As you can see here, there are a couple of communities that do not have a single tax rate, including Auburn, and that would be Webster, Hudson, and actually, on on this chart, that's it. There is one additional that has shifted, has moved to having it in a later year. What I want to point out here is in FY11, Auburn ranked 10th in the area out of 29 communities for the lowest average single-family tax bill. In 13, so the comparison years, 11 to 13, Auburn still ranked 10th for 29 communities. And, let's see, the same communities still have the, the same two communities still have the CIP rate in addition to Auburn. So three of the 29 have the, are not a single tax rate. If you look at the recent data that came out on the Department of Revenue website for 11 to 14, 2/3 of the communities in the central Mass area have higher FY14 single-family tax bills than Auburn has. The one that you will not see in here now that is in the other two slides I showed is Oxford, because locally, Oxford happens to be one of the 11 communities that had not set their tax rate as of the time that DOR did this report, so you're not going to see Oxford in here. But for consistency purposes, I still looked at the 29 communities, just added in the next community. If you notice here, overall, from 11 to 14, Auburn's FY14 single-family tax bill ranks nine out of 29 communities, and that again is ninth lowest. Just in conclusion, the FY11 to 14 fiscal strategies that we have implemented, the policies that the board adopted in November of 12, the strategies that town administration has undertaken to maintain conservative budgeting and solid fiscal planning have paid off, and I think you can see that. Since FY11, almost $2 million in local funds have been allocated to our roadway improvement program. This is on top of Chapter 90 funds. Our stabilization fund has steadily increased. Our free cash has significantly increased. Our reserves has significantly increased, and our excess levy has continued to increase, as I showed you on a prior slide, nearly 3 million. In addition to that, during this period of time, from 11 to 14, the town has established an OPEB trust fund, and into that, we have deposited $500,000 annually since FY12. This year, FY15, we've got another recommendation coming up to town meeting for another $500,000 per the policies that the board developed. These positive conditions and these financial trends were absolutely noted by the bond rating agencies, and they were what led us to an excellent bond rating from Standard and Poor's of AA+ in March. And again, I just want to point out that during this entire time, when we've been able to accomplish this, put extra money into stabilization, free cash, increase our reserves, reduce our reliance on on free cash, add to the road construction, add to OPEB, during this time, the town has still been able to, the average single-family tax bill maintained at around the 120, 122 level ranking in the state, and the average single-family tax bill in that period increased a total of 10.87% over that period, and all of this was still accomplished. So I thought it was an, it was an interesting report that came out. It's always good to look at comparisons. The other piece that comes from looking at the comparisons is to try to see where you start to see a shift in the economy statewide. And it appears that the, again, the trend is going to start going up, where houses are going to be, the housing market's going to come back, sales are going to start to pick up a little bit, and over time, you're going to see the, hopefully, the valuations going up, and when the valuations go up statewide, the the tax rates tend to go down. It's the two figures that you've got to look at. But this is the most recent data that came out of DOR, and I wanted to make sure that I responded to the questions. Again, I I've received several questions. The CFO has received the questions, and we thought this was really good information, and we wanted to share it with everybody. So, thank you.
Mr. Semonian.
Yeah, just one comment, because I appreciate the information, as I'm sure do the residents. But one word that kept jumping out at me during this entire presentation was average. So we're talking about the average tax bill. So if someone, if someone is actually saying that their tax bill increased by 20, 25%, 30%, it's certainly valid, because we're talking, we're saying 10.87 is the average. If there, if that's an average, there's some above, some below that number, correct?
Through the chair, and I'll let the CFO respond to, but that primarily could only happen if there were additions or improvements that were made to the property.
Well, I mean, I just, I know from talking to the assessors' office that that is the case because of assessments that weren't done for for a period of years and and caused certain tax bills to be skewed. I've had that conversation.
I would tell you, I I am not aware of any properties that, any residential properties that had a 30% increase.
Okay.
There may be, but I'm not.
Like I said, I appreciate the information, but I don't think we should casually dismiss anyone who says that their tax bill is above 10.87%, because we're talking in averages here. And I think if I recall, when I looked at mine, it was above that. I can't say that for a fact, because it's been a while since I actually sat down and did the numbers, but I do believe it was above the average. I mean, that's simple math. If you're talking in averages, there are some above and some below.
There would, through the chair, there will be some above and there will be some below. I don't believe that we'll see anything that is as high as the 30%. Through the chair.
And if I may, and I would have to agree with the town manager, certainly, I think if you look at a property's rate of growth over the period of time that that was identified, without any new additions, any decks, any modifications made to the house, any any internal upgrades to the home, there may be a a difference of plus 2 or minus 2%, but certainly it would be within that range, and nothing out of the norm in the area of 30 something percent. I mean, that's just absurd.
I don't see, I don't see how that's possible. Based, based on simple calculus, if you, if you take that average and you were to calculate the area of that curve, I don't see how that could be plus or minus 2. There's no way that works out from a mathematical standpoint.
When you were referring to the average of of 10.87, and you indicated that your value may have been higher, I would venture to say that if your value was higher, it would, it would be in the range of of maybe plus 2%.
Right, it's possible, but it's not the rule.
There was some that would be under 10.87, but as a general rule of thumb, without any major modifications to the house, those values are driven by sales and they're driven by.
Understood, but now we're putting conditions on. If you didn't do this, if you didn't do that, we can't say. I'm just saying, we're talking about averages, average, 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 that jumped out. So I don't want, I don't want people to feel like they're being casually dismissed if they say my tax bill was above this and, well, yeah, no, actually, it's not possible, because it is possible.
If, if someone's tax bill, if they believe that their tax bill went up to 30% increase, are you able to address that with them?
Yes.
Yeah, through the chair. I mean, I just want to make it clear. The information that's here is on the DOR website. This is not specific to any property, any one property at all. This is averages, and that is what DOR actually reports on, are averages. Of course, there's always going to be something that may be skewed. There, there's always a reason. Somebody puts an addition on, somebody puts a brand-new roof on, somebody had a deck put on. There are a number of different reasons that that might change. But for purposes of this, I wanted to show the board what the average is and what's happening here in Auburn now with our average tax rate and the average tax bills. If anyone does have a question, they can contact us. The questions I've received were honestly just more generic as to whether the taxes had actually risen 30%.
Mr. Page.
Wayne Page, 900 Common Road. I haven't looked into this situation, but I had a candidate that came down and showed me the numbers between his.
I just want to caution you that we can't discuss any, any political races here tonight. You can talk in general.
That's not what I'm, I'm talking about the taxes. I'm just saying, somebody had brought it forward to me coming down to my house.
Just don't, then don't, don't use specifics regarding how it got to you.
But the numbers seemed pretty high to me, and as a taxpayer in Auburn, I've been very disappointed with the board's vote in the last four years, because it's the residential taxes rates that's been going up and the businesses have been coming down. Not all of you have voted for it. There's one selectman that did not vote for it. There's one selectman says he didn't vote for it, but he's campaigning, Bob Grossman, saying.
We, we can't discuss campaigning, Mr. Page.
That's okay, I'm done with that.
That's the last time I'll caution you about campaigning.
Okay, thank you. I got it out anyway, but it's just unbelievable the way the tax rate is being done in this town the last four years. The businesses are getting a breaks. The residents are fighting every day to make their payments for taxes, bills, fuel, pills, food, and we got a board that lately has just been voting for businesses and not their own residents. Thank you.
Well, we have the property tax analysis. We can put it on the website, and the residents can make their own determination. Then, was there anything else in this? Next item we have are tabled items. We have none. I'm sorry. Could you come up to the microphone, please? You know the, you know the drill. We want every, we want everyone at. We want everyone at home to hear your question.
We don't know, because we don't come to every single meeting. He seems to watch it on TV every week, but what's OPEB mean?
OPEB.
Yeah, through the chair, we need to have a, a guide to the acronyms. OPEB means Other Post Employment Benefits, and it is a trust fund that was established through a town meeting vote, I believe, in May of 2012, to enable the town to put money aside, right now, half a million dollars aside, to cover our liability for our current, future, and retired employees. It is.
Next time you get.
So we have no tabled items. Under Board of Selectmen items, Mr. Semonian is asked to hold this item to the next meeting. Are there any other member items? Mr. Semonian?
Yeah, I actually have a question, because I, there doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason to, to this. Some meetings, we have a member of the Auburn Police Department here, and other meetings, we don't. And I'm not really sure why we're, and and no offense to the Police Department, because I know they're just doing what they're asked to do, but I don't understand why we're expanding town resources to sometimes have someone here and sometimes not have someone here from the Auburn Police Department, and and why that is.
Through the chair, I believe, at least since I've been here, almost every single meeting, somebody from the Auburn Police Department who's on patrol stops into Town Hall. I know in other communities, every single Board of Selectmen meeting actually uses police details, as they do with their public hearings. We don't have that need, so in lieu of having public details at every single meeting, as again, as most communities do, we just have whoever is on duty at the time swing by Town Hall. It's been going on for, since I've been here, at least three years.
Doesn't seem to be consistent. Sometimes they're here and sometimes they're not.
Well, if there's a call that they're on, they're not going to be here, they're going to be on there.
Well, that's what I mean. It just seems, I don't know, it seems like there are better things that our Police Department could be doing for the residents than babysitting us, really.
This is actually through the chair, not babysitting. This is saving taxpayer money by not having a police detail, which is common practice at public meetings, as it is at public hearings. In the past, I know we have had details. We are trying to cut down on the use of details and just utilizing patrol as they are available. A lot of times, you're not going to see them here because there's a call and they're not able to come. They have to go with what the priority is, but if they're able to come, they've been doing it consistently since I've been here.
That doesn't answer my question. I don't understand the why. Why do we feel we need someone to stop by or or come to a meeting or, I don't, I don't understand. Is there, what is, what is the driving reason for having a member of the Auburn Police Department come?
Through the chair, again, when, I will say this, when I was with the city of Worcester, we had a police detail that was actually stationed at every single public meeting that stayed at the whole meeting. It's just common practice to have someone there. If something were to happen, you need somebody there. You wouldn't make the phone call. I felt when I came, we didn't need to have a detail here every time, so I asked the chief if we could have someone who just came in occasionally, who was just on duty, to stop in.
Again.
No need to have a detail.
But why, why, why would you ask the chief of police to have someone here?
Through the chair, at this point, I think I'd rather have the chief of police respond, because this was a conversation that I had with the chief of police, and I don't want to speak for him.
No, you said that you asked the chief to have someone here, so I'm trying to determine the reason why you felt it necessary to have that conversation with the chief. To say it's common practice among other towns, to me, we can, I'm sure we could go out and find a million different things that are common practicing among the towns. It's never really been discussed among the board if we need someone here or not. And again, if if we have someone here who's on duty, and they could be out patrolling some place in the town, it just doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Mr. Holstrom.
Through the chair, is there a problem with the police officer being in the building?
I'm just asking why.
No, I, my question is, through the chair, is there a problem with a police No, my question is, through the chair, is there a problem with a police officer being in the building?
If you're directing that towards me, my answer to you is, I will answer your question when I get an answer to my question.
Okay, we're going to move on from this end, and we'll get a report from the chief.
I just don't understand it.
Is there any additional public comment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to continue this under public comment, because, so a member of this board asked a question, and no one really feels they have to answer it. That's, that's...
Through the chair, I'm happy to answer it again. I thought I did.
It's not, I'm asking why specifically you felt you needed to have that conversation with the chief? Did you feel that you were in danger? Did someone else feel they were in danger? Did someone feel that, you know, this was a popular place for folks to come and commit crimes? I'm trying to understand what the rationale was for that conversation.
There were a lot of different rationales, for the same reason that cameras are generally installed in public buildings. If you look at public buildings across the country, and I'll answer it this way, I went to a training three weeks ago called Alice. And at the Alice training, we learned how to react to and handle situations where there may be an incident in a public building. Unfortunately, it happens. It doesn't just happen in schools. It doesn't just happen in post office buildings. It happens in public buildings. And if there is ever a need for anything from a safety perspective, that is part of it. I will stand by that decision. I think it's important that we keep cameras. I think it's important that we keep the public safe. And I think it's important that we keep members who come to this chamber, who are here for a meeting, to feel that they're secure, that there isn't going to be some incident. You can't prevent everything, but you can certainly take some preventative measures, and that's what I'm doing.
Well, that's really a contradiction of everything that you just said, because you said, you just said it was a safety issue for the public, for us, for whatever. Prior to that, you said that there are times when someone's not here because they get a call. So that would mean that there are times when it's acceptable for us not to be protected.
Through the chair, again, it's a decision that has to be made relating to whether you want to have a detail here at all times. If you notice, there are cameras in this, around here. There are cameras through Town Hall. There are cameras in public buildings. And there is a direct feed to the police dispatch. So this building is being watched. It is as safe as we can make it without having a police detail at all times at the building. I didn't feel that was necessary. The police chief didn't feel that was necessary. But as a town administrator, I feel it's critical that we take steps to ensure the public safety. Again, that's why I went to a training. I will continue to go to those trainings, and I'll continue to implement measures that protect the public while they're in public facilities.
I'm going to let it go. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but there's obviously a reason here that nobody wants to discuss. Just keep tap dancing around on the same question. It's not an...
Through the chair, if that's the case, what is the reason?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
I've given my answer. If that is the reason, I'm done.
Why it's acceptable sometimes for a person to be here, why it's acceptable not. And again, it's nothing towards the Auburn PD. They're doing what they're asked to do. I get that. But I just think there's a better use of their time.
And through the chair, I will stand by, I think, when there are public safety issues. I'm not going to divulge everything that we do, but that is one reason that we do it.
A member of this board is asking a question, and they're not getting an answer other than, this is what I feel. It doesn't make sense. But I'll let it go.
Mr. Page, I'll allow you to speak, but I'll caution you against making any campaign statement.
Nothing to do with campaigns. Nothing to do before. It's just an honest answer. I was kind of wondering why the police are here, and then they're not here, and then they're here, and then they're not here. Is that some, the only thing I really want to know is, are they called prior to the meeting, or do they come on their own? Like, if, say, you're having a meeting tonight, do you call them before the meeting and say, I want somebody there? Or do they come on a rotating basis?
This is an ongoing request that has happened for as long as I can remember. And if there's availability of the Auburn Police, you may not see them. We happen to see the police officer standing right there at the back room. The police officer many times has been right out in the hallway.
Believe me, I've been coming to these meetings for quite a long time, and I see the police officers, but they seem to be coming more and more and more than they did before. And I'd just like to know, alls I'm asking is, is it a revolving thing that you have with the Police Department, that this, this happens all the time now? Or is it just something the town manager or the board chairman goes and calls up the police station, say, do you have an officer available for tonight's meeting?
It's an ongoing request.
Okay, thank you.
No, the chairman, I can speak for myself, does not make a direct request to the Police Department to have a police officer there. And I think you just heard the town manager's explanation, that this has been an ongoing thing.
Through the chair, I'll also add, if there's ever any type of situation that occurs during the day that I feel that I need to make the chief aware of, I will make the chief aware of, and the chief may or may not add more police power to the particular building. It's not necessarily here. It all depends, and I'm not going to say anything else than that.
I guess I just do have one more question. Is there a police officer present at all the other meetings, Planning Board, Conservation, Board of Health, all those, for the same reason?
Through the chair, occasionally, there are police officers at Planning Board meetings. Generally, that's dictated by how many people they expect to have at a meeting. If the meeting expects to have a lot of items on it and a lot of people, and crowd control is an issue, then there will be an officer there.
Okay, so now, I was going to let this go, but again, it doesn't make sense. Either it's a safety issue, or it's not. It shouldn't depend on the number of people there. Either there's a potential for their lives to be in danger, or there isn't. I mean, either we need a police officer there, or we don't. Again, we're making up answers as we go, it seems. And as far as the security cameras go, that's, I mean, let's face it, you can have all the security cameras you want. They had millions, I won't say millions, but thousands of security cameras in Vancouver in 2011. And that didn't stop the people of Vancouver from rioting, looting, committing crimes, hurting each other and killing each other after Vancouver lost the Stanley Cup. So it is what it is. But, I mean, we're just making this up as we go. I asked a simple question, expected a simple answer, and I just got rhetoric and semantics, and it's a shame.
You got an answer from the town manager. This is the last comment, Mr. Page.
Mr. Simoneon, you asked about other committee having police details. At the Auburn School Committee, we do not have them, ever.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
I'll just take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, true.